Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of January 25th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Our setup here is expanding. We have had our departments and our department heads here in past meetings and most meetings, but we've moved them closer, and that was our new town administrator suggesting. I like it very much. It's nice to see everybody here and involved. So, Mr. Clerk, let's go right into it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Before we do that, if I could get, if you could amend that motion to pull HH3 and have that heard at the Citizens Forum portion at the end of our meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I was so gung ho to start this meeting and to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance that I skipped Troop 6. Can you see them sitting there in the back? That Troop 6 from Bristol was going to lead us, so if we could give them a round of applause. We could do it again because it is that important. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
Troop 6, come on up and do it with us, would you?
Scout's pledge.
Administrator suggested the scout's pledge along with it. That's wonderful. Come on up. Right there, perfect.
Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to give another round of applause. Thanks for your indulgence, everyone. I appreciate it. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, second reading of ordinance This is to reduce from 6 to 5 the number of Class BV Limited intoxicating beverage licenses.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. As part of making sure that everybody in the, that knows what's going on with this, we'll take a point here and there to explain, this is a reduction of a limited BV license. We just granted a full BV license, so this gets rid of the license that was being used. That was the whole point behind this. So there was a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the Bristol Warren Education Foundation Bodacious B event. The organizers are requesting a one-day dancing and entertainment license for the event, which will be held on March 11th. You have recommendations for the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police, all to approve.
Motion to approve the one-day dancing entertainment license on March 11th with all the approvals and recommendations of all town departments.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item F1. This is the second reading for the removal of accessible parking space across from 82 Washington Street.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next items all have to do with council appointments. The first is the Item G1A, the harbor master. You have the application of Greg Marsili of 9 Etalina Court, who is requesting council consideration for reappointment. You have a recommendation provided from the former town administrator.
Motion to reappoint Greg Marsili as harbor master.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is Item G1B. These are the assistant harbor masters, all seeking reappointment. You, I'm sorry, you have one seeking appointment, who's Daniel Blount. You have David Gerton, Thomas Guthline, Alan Leach, Scott Marino, and John Motta, all seeking reappointment, and you have the recommendation of the harbor master following that list.
Motion to appoint all the assistant harbor masters specified as the town clerk, and that would be excluding Daniel Blount to schedule an interview before his appointment.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?
Greg, just for discussion, is any one of our dockhands?
I believe Dan Blount. I'll have to check. I'm pretty sure he interviewed last year.
Yeah.
To be elevated to an assistant harbor master. So I'll have to check the records, but last year he came in. So he was an auxiliary harbor master the first year, then last year he wanted to be elevated to an assistant harbor master, and I believe he sat for an interview. But I'll have to, I'll check.
Okay.
All right, we'll verify that along with what you come back with us.
Sure.
To my colleagues in the council, we have a tentative meeting for February 13th, which is the Capitol Projects Discussion, and I'm working with a clerk to see if we could schedule that an hour early to do interviews. If, in fact, we can and it is necessary, we can reach out to Daniel for the 13th. So, okay. So we have a motion and a second to appoint. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Following that is Item G1C. These are the auxiliary harbor masters. You have George Gatos, Patrick Guthline, Andrew Mulvey, Joseph Simeoni, William Texera, and Nathan Gallison seeking reappointment. You have Matt DeWolf, 16 Ridge Road, interested in appointment. You have recommendation provided by the harbor master.
Is Mr. Gatos interested because by his application he says do not?
I'm not sure. I didn't see his application, Mr. DeWolf.
Okay. I just didn't know.
My understanding it was no. Do you not want to be reappointed?
It could be just mistyped, then. Obviously, I think you would do it per the recommendation anyways. He included on the recommendation.
Okay. We could go by that. So, motion to appoint all the auxiliary harbor masters as recommended by the harbor master. Now, Matt DeWolf, wasn't he another one we interviewed, or?
No. Matt DeWolf is a dockhand.
A dockhand, okay.
Wants to be elevated to an auxiliary harbor master. He's been with me for a couple of years. He's at college, so this would be one in the May timeframe that he'd be here for an interview.
Okay.
He just wanted to get it in, though.
So we'll schedule an interview at his convenience in this council for Matt DeWolf, and the rest being reappointed.
Second. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the tree warden, and you have two applicants. You have Steven Saracino, the current tree warden, who is interested in being reappointed, and you also have the former tree warden, Michael King, who is interested in getting his old job back.
Michael did serve as well. I had a conversation with him. I'm going to make the appointment to reappoint Mr. Saracino as tree warden.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Absolutely. Just one second. So for discussion, please.
There is a recommendation from the former town administrator. Also, in lieu of that, I would also recommend that perhaps the council consider interviewing. Mr. King was a volunteer for over two years, almost three years. From what I understand, he served the town well. I think, with all due respect, we could afford him the opportunity of an interview. I'd appreciate any consideration to that.
And I believe when he put his letter in, he wanted to just talk to us in regards to what worked, what didn't work, and he'd like to just express his thoughts, so I wouldn't mind.
Well, if we're going to have that meeting on the 13th, maybe we could just include...
You don't want it?
I thought it was on, sorry. If we're going to have the meeting on the 13th and do some interviews, maybe we could just interview him and/or both again.
So I'll amend my motion to not appoint at this time until the interviewer, Michael King, to be specified by the town clerk in the council.
So is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So that motion is to interview, now, do we want to interview just Michael, or are we looking to re, I know we've just talked to our current tree warden. Did we want to talk with him again, or do we feel that's necessary?
It'd be helpful to me to talk to both, and I think we should interview both. Now that some time has passed with, after Stephen's year being the tree warden, to understand from him what he thinks the best way to move forward is, as far as his department goes as well.
So we'll interview both.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to interview both candidates. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the annual recommended special constables, private investigators, matrons, and retiree officers for 2017.
Motion to approve as submitted. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, let's see. I think we have a little hiccup on this one. Hang on one second. Sometimes these things are done on automatic pilot.
Well, because one says he does not want to be.
Right, exactly. Is it Delesio?
Yes.
Okay. Not seeking.
Miss Tanner.
Right.
Okay. The, we have Board of Tenants of Feas. You have currently serving member Pasquale Delesio, who is not seeking reappointment. You have Donald Luminello, who is seeking reappointment, and you have a new applicant, Michelle Tanner, who is interested in seeking appointment.
So make a motion to reappoint Mr. Luminello and schedule an interview for Michelle Tanner.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, just, we'd like to thank Mr. Delesio for his time that he served on the board.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next, the Bristol Housing Authority, with term to expire in January of 2022. You have John E. Faria, 1039 Hope Street, who is interested in being reappointed. You have the recommendations provided by the executive director of the Housing Authority and also the president of the Tenants Association.
Motion to reappoint John Faria, Bristol Housing Authority.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And then there is the CRMC alternate member, John B. Triano of 707 Hope Street, is the current serving member. He would like to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is a list provided by the Substance Abuse Prevention Task Force of their proposed membership for the upcoming term.
Motion to approve the list as submitted for the Bristol Substance Abuse Task Force.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to add that wish the task force great success going forward. There was a meeting yesterday talking about the extreme challenges that we as a town are going to face with substance abuse and prevention. So I think we all should make an effort to engage as we can to help address this problem that our community is facing. Fortunately, we've got some great funding over the next five years, and I just think that it implemented correctly and smartly will help move the needle on the addiction problem that many of us see.
Thank you.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also have the personnel board. You have the application of Renee Bellotti, 3 Lila Jean Drive, who is interested in being appointed to that board.
Motion to reappoint Renee Bellotti to the personnel board.
This isn't a re, it's a...
She's on the list.
She's on already.
She's on my list here. It says Renee Bellotti.
She's a re, she's a reappointment.
December 16.
Another hiccup. Sorry about that.
Did I give her a second? I'm sorry.
I didn't hear one. Your second.
Yeah, second, that's right.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next is memorandum from my office, reminding the council that it's its responsibility to appoint the five, or rather, four members of the Bristol Warren Regional School District Joint Finance Committee. The chairman serves automatically. The council has the opportunity to appoint four other individuals to the board.
What's this council's pleasure?
We appoint all, the full council and Steve Contente.
No, you don't, he appoints himself, so that's only informational.
Okay.
You're just going to appoint four people. So the remaining counselors?
The remaining counselors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is correspondence from the Secretary of the Fourth of July Committee regarding proposed additional members for the current year.
Motion.
To approve the proposed additional members for their 2016, 2017 year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At the end of boards and commission reappointments, I always like to speak for this council to say thank you to the boards, commissions, and all the volunteering work that happens in Bristol. This council represents the town, so the town appreciates what you do. If you thought about getting on a board or commission, this is how hard it is to do. Go to the town clerk's office, grab one of these pieces of paper, express your interest. If you're not sure what to do, reach out to anyone on the town council or in the town. We'd be more than happy to share with you its responsibilities and level of commitment. You can decide what works for you. But for those of you who are already on those boards and commissions, thank you.
Okay. The next item is the first item under Old Business. This is continued from your December 14th meeting. It has to do with the nonprofit mooring fees, and you have correspondence from the harbor master regarding those fees.
Greg, could you speak to this council about your recommendation on this?
I, in my long-winded letter, I explained a lot of stuff. I gave two options that I believe that are fair, and we've been dealing with this for about a year now. Option one is to leave the sailing school at the current rate of $260. If we rewrite the policies, we'll open the door up for other people or organizations to ask for a lower rate as well. I've already had inquiries from senior citizens, disabled individuals, and veterans for a lower rate. Option two is to create a nonprofit definition, and rate would be entered into the definition section of Chapter 8, Section 8-2. The nonprofit would have to show proof to my office that they are designated as such, and that a minimum 75% of their sailing school students or club members are Bristol residents annually. My recommendation for that rate should be $180 per mooring, and that's halfway between a resident rate and a commercial rate. So, that's where, I leave it to you guys to make the decision.
All the fun to us.
It's all the fun to you. But bills went out again, so I think Mr. Cromwell's here tonight. I don't see anybody else. I know Don Franco's in Florida already, so I don't, I don't think anybody here is from the Harbor Commission to speak about it. Okay.
Well, I know that the harbor management plan is continuing, right? It's not finalized. So with your two options amongst my colleagues, if that number is an option for option two or a further discussion at a scale of more conversations with all input from the Harbor Commission and advisory in the council, not to prolong this, but just to come to a consensus when we were going over the fees before in that type of venue, to come up, I don't know if that's the price. I'm just communicating with my colleagues if that's another option.
Well, my thought of your options, I like creating the nonprofit definition, so I like that option. I'm not sure about the fee, and that's what I like to hear from the, you know, the sailing schools, because I do think the sailing schools are an important part, and I think if you use this definition of the 75% of the residents being, of the students being from Bristol and so forth, I'm just, I'm just not sure that fee. I mean, it sounds fair that it's halfway between, but I'm not sure, given all the discussion we had, if that's like a reasonable. So I guess if we hear from other, the sailing school people, I'd like to hear that part.
Before I ask for comment, and this is not a public hearing, so that doesn't mean there can't be public comment, but this is actually not a public hearing. This was for discussion to be voted on. Again, we can hear public hearing, and it sounds like we may, but I want to ask my colleagues first, do they want to share anything before I ask for public comment?
All I wanted to say is that with these little bit of incentives, we need to make sure that we're looking at the big picture in regards to not making sure we're giving special prices for certain groups, because in a way, people that don't own boats are actually subsidizing these organizations. Although I do believe in the education, I believe education is important. So for me, the main things I'm going to be looking for are, I'd like to see some of the books and to see, you know, what the hardships would be in regards to the higher rates, and number two, can they achieve a 75% sailing school? 75% of the kids need to be from Bristol in the sailing program. So those are, those are some main crucial questions for me to find out what are the financials on this in determining my, what direction I go, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think there's no doubt that the ordinance needs clarification, and adding a category for nonprofit is one way to do that, and I think that'll accomplish that. Regarding the structure of, the rate structure for that new category, you know, I think it deserves some consideration and maybe more consideration than we can give tonight, whereas it's part of a broader picture, the rate schedule that we proposed and put forth for all moorings, commercial, recreational, as well as slips. So I think as a starting point, clarifying the ordinance by redefining or defining nonprofits as a start, and I think also part of the conversation is giving the nonprofits in town, such as the Harrisoff Museum and the East Bay Sailing Foundation, an opportunity to first describe how they give back to the community, and maybe if there's opportunities to increase ways we should give back, such as on-the-water days for middle school students, things that aren't being done now, and I think in consideration of not just how they give back now, but how they could give back in the future, I think that can be rolled up into the conversation as far as rate structure. So I think any, any discount would be arbitrary at this point, but I do think that there is value that the nonprofits do provide. But, so in conclusion, I think we should define better, separate nonprofits from the ordinance, away from commercial and recreational, and consider as part of the harbor management revision over the next 12 months, that specific rate, and whether it's in half or whether it's a percentage of the commercial rate, so that it is a rolling adjustment off of another rate structure are all things we should consider. So those are my thoughts.
Although it is not a public hearing, did anybody want to share something? And if you do, please just, if you could stand up if you plan on saying something, so we can hear everyone and do it timely.
Good evening. Nick Cromwell, 649 Hope Street.
Good evening.
I'm the volunteer board chair for East Bay Sailing Foundation that runs, I wrote a bunch of notes, I've provided them previously. I apologize for not being here at the previous meeting in December, but we talked last year about this, and then thought we had resolution for this previous year with Greg, but, and then I've talked with Steve this past week as well about some of these issues. I think, and I can, if it's okay, I'd like to share, I have my financials here, I'd like to share them with you.
Certainly through the, sure. Make sure the clerk gets a copy.
I also printed up, sorry, I know you want me to talk to you.
Thank you.
I gave you my copy. Sorry about that. I also, I included the note that I sent to the town council last year with that. I made one minor change based on that. My recommendation, a couple of things. One is that we changed the ordinance. I think it makes sense to put a category. I think we should link it to the commercial, or I'm sorry, to the residential rate. I don't think we should pick a number. I think it would be easier for the town council, the Harbor Commission, if the town, if the council said it should be 125%, 110% is what I recommend of the residential rate, then you don't have to go through a long discussion about three mooring rates. You can just decide on the two and go forward. It'd just make life easier in the future.
So the proposed 180 rate that he was proposed, you would prefer it to be the $100 rate, correct?
I think $180 is expensive, and I can talk about why. One is, we don't make money, East Bay Sailing Foundation, as you'll see in my financials, which are, I think, pages, the back of page two and page three. We're running a deficit every year, about $20,000 on our budget. We don't make money. We get donations, we get, we do fundraising, a lot of activities to try to run and stay above board. We hire a lot. Our biggest expense is our payroll, and we hire a lot of high school and college kids that grew up sailing in Bristol, and so that would have to be an area that we would look to cut if we had to pay an extra, I think it ends up being around three or four grand, you know, and that, to me, is kind of a downside. With regard to the 75% of our members being, or activities being from Bristol, I don't think we would meet that. I think we could make efforts to meet that, but I don't think we would right now, but I don't know that that's a negative. We bring people to Bristol to come experience an activity on the water, and they come back. They come back from mooring, they come back from Portsmouth, and they choose to come to Bristol because it's such a great place to go sailing, and we're introducing them to that, and I think there's a lot of value in that. Additionally, if you look, I have a Google screenshot from, from the air of our moorings. We have 15 moorings in front of Bristol Yacht Club. I estimate that that space probably would accommodate about six 30-foot commercial boats, and you don't make a whole lot more money if we give you those moorings back, or I say you. The town doesn't make a whole lot more money if we give those back. Our boats are small. They don't have engines in them, they don't do pump out, we don't, they're not in the water year-round. We're just during the core, you know, summer camp season. We're really not impacting, in my opinion, the harbor as much as a commercial boat that's used every day to go out. We don't, we don't have engines, and the boats are small. They're 16 to 22 feet long, and they're used for that activity. I put in there my recommendation for the proposal on the first half-cut page. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and look forward to hearing that. The Harrisoff rep is here as well. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one, one final thing. We've, I've talked with a number of people, we talked about this last year. I believe strongly that we should, when we define this, we should categorize it as moorings that are utilized to support the mission of 501(c)(3)'s with an education for sailing seamanship and, you know, on-the-water activities, and that by defining that as a Bristol nonprofit, so somebody who operates out of Bristol, that is, and the moorings that are supporting that activity, because if a nonprofit came in, set itself up, and got 10 moorings, but then, and came to Greg and said, "I'm a nonprofit, and my customers are all from Bristol," and then they leased them out, which the town council doesn't, or the harbor master doesn't have any control over, they would do that, and those aren't being used for that mission. So as an example, Bristol Yacht Club has a lot of moorings. I think they've got 30. 15 of them we use, and that's because Bristol Yacht Club and East Bay Sailing Foundation were at one point the same organizations, and they've split, and now, as I said earlier, we get a lot from other people to run our thing, and one of the things that we get is those, the use of those moorings. We would want those moorings to be captured. We talked about this last year, it was my impression that that was where we were going. I noticed in Greg's letter that he says specifically that those moorings would not be, I think that they should be, and the flip side of that, just to kind of finish this off, is that Harrisoff has sort of the opposite issue, where they have moorings that they rent, but they also have moorings they use for their sailing school. And I wouldn't, don't think that they, they can speak for it, but I'm pretty sure that they don't want the nonprofit rate for the ones that they rent, just for the ones that the sailing school's boats are on, and I think that's appropriate, and I think my language that I recommend puts that in a, in a package that we can, we can work with.
That, for me, is like a sticky subject, because, you know, we're, in a sense, the taxpayers are subsidizing those moorings, and if, in turn, they get rented, and they get rented for, I don't know, $800 for the next couple of weeks, whatever, you guys are, you guys are making money based on, you know, that subsidized... guys are, you guys are making money based on, you know, that subsidized rate. So, that worries me a little bit. So, maybe if you could clarify that, that'd be great, how that works.
Yes.
It's not so much the yacht club sailing, it's Harris Off that does it, right?
And we, the intent is that they won't be. That, my language makes sure that that's not possible. So, by saying that it is moorings that are in support of the mission of the 501(c)(3) organization, then Greg and the harbor commission have the ability to look at that, what those moorings are used for, and, and say, "No, you can't have the nonprofit rate," or, "Yes, that mooring is appropriate for the nonprofit." And they know the boats that are on it and what we're using it for. And so, that, I believe, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm certainly willing to take suggestions on what that language should say. But I think I captured it appropriately, according to what we talked about last year at about this time.
So, you said that you don't want to get it too complex when we have the further discussion of different tiers, to keep it simple. And you stated you would like to keep it the residential rate. If we're going to define a separate classification of an area in the ordinance, I would think that it would pertain to having it separated in a price structure, also to be fair. Because if you're a resident, and I'm sure we're going to have these conversations more, of the criteria, why you feel the nonprofits should get that resident rate versus how we have the resident rate. We have a commercial rate. And if we're going to define a separate section of that ordinance to be added, why wouldn't another rate be, you know, supported?
I think another rate is okay, if that's what the town, and I think that that's kind of the direction we're going in, based on the conversations that we've had. What I was trying to say was that by linking it as a percentage of the residential rate, then when you go through those deliberations, it just automatically falls out in the math at the end of those deliberations. So, I do think it's, it's, I'm, we're okay with a rate that's 100, and, I mean, I recommend 110%. Obviously, I come from, I stand where I sit. So, that's, that's why I think it should be lower. But we, we think it's appropriate that it's a separate rate.
Thank you.
I think that does make it a very simple and cleaner way, an easier way. So, anytime that we make an adjustment to the mooring fees, it's already, like, captured in there. Just like I wasn't sure $180 was correct. I'm not sure 110% is correct either on that number. But I do think that that concept is a good one. And I think your distinction for with, you know, if this does get drafted up into the ordinance, you know, to make sure to use by the mission, you know, the mission of the educational mission of the 501(c)(3), I think that's a good point that you raised. So, thank you for doing that.
Could you clarify the dollar amounts, Nick? So, if you take the number of moorings that the sailing school has, that this rate would apply to, that number of moorings multiplied times the existing, or the current commercial rate, and compare that to the existing residential rate, what's the spread?
Yeah. You want, do you want to give me a second? I'll do the math.
If you're going between commercial and the residential, it'd be 960 if I did my math correct.
It's in the, it's in Greg's letter, I think, on page two.
Yeah.
So, the residential is $90, I believe?
$100.
Oh, it's $100. And the residential, or the commercial is 265. Is that correct?
260.
260.
260. So, I'm not good with.
So, 170 times the amount of moorings that you have, about 170?
So, we have 30, no, 50, yeah, 20, 21.
You want to apply it to 21 moorings?
Yes. For, yes. So, I don't have, I'm sorry. I'm not doing the math very well.
Just so I think for the, so the council knows the amount of money that we're talking about.
Right. So, 260 minus 100 times.
160 times 21, right?
Yes, that's right.
So, it's $3,360 in addition to. I would point out that when the plan was developed and the rates were raised, I think, two or three years ago, those moorings were counted as residential rates. Because for the past 30 years, that's what those rates have been. And so, when the residential rates were increased, that, that $3,000 from us wasn't counted as part of the harbor commission's budget.
But it sounds like you agree with that characterization of those other moorings as commercial, as it's just the sailing school moorings that you're looking?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. So, the Bristol Yacht Club.
So, it's a $3,000 adjustment going forward that I think you're, you're looking for the council to consider as it applies to the East Bay Sailing Foundation, Harris Off being separate.
Yes.
Except that that has never been, I think the important thing, if I remember correctly though, Nick, is that it's never been in the, it's never been in the revenue. It's been, it was suggested by Greg last year, and we put it off, you know, we thought maybe it was Salvinah, but it was off for last year, and it continued at the commercial rate. It was suggest, I mean, it continued the residential rate. It was suggested to go to the commercial rate last year, but it didn't really happen. So, we've never really gotten that extra revenue, you know?
Yes. My point is merely that in the future, it would be additional revenue. And if that's.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just trying to clarify it for our, you know, just for Andy. Like, we never had that money, and now we're giving it up. It was that, you were always paying the residential rate, and then there was a suggestion to pay the commercial rate. You all came and, you know, raised these issues last year, and then we held off and went with the residential rate last year. And now, we're looking to come up with some final solution.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I, just one last, before I yield the mic, to Mr. Tiska's point about becoming more community-based and doing more. I've been running the board chair for East Bay Sailing Foundation for four years. I actually just, when I was in Afghanistan, sitting in a cardboard box, I decided that I, it's actually a plywood box, I apologize, that I decided I needed to get back into doing activities and volunteering for the sport that I grew up doing. And one of the things that I've had on my list of things to do is for us to get more involved in the community. And we're trying to do that. We've talked with, about developing a high school sailing team. We've talked about getting kids from middle school out and participating in the activity and doing those things. And we look forward to the opportunity to try to do those. And I welcome any suggestions on how we can do more to support the town, because I think that it makes a good partnership, and it's a great way for us to both market ourselves, but also to show why Bristol's such a great place to come and enjoy the water. So, all right. Thank you.
Dana Clough, I live at 20 Academy Ave. I'm the director of finance and operations at the Harris Off Marine Museum. I'm not going to take too much of your time, because I echo everything that Nick says. I ran some financials. I didn't provide them for the council, but I'm happy to provide them after this meeting. We do, again, like Nick, show deficits in our programs, staffing costs being the highest. But just so you know what we're working with from our side, then the educational-based moorings that we use that we're asking for is a total of eight moorings and would be about $1,300.
Is there any questions? Thank you. So, from these conversations, I've heard some potential appetite, excuse me, appetite to have some additional discussions. It would seem appropriate at this point to set up a workshop, and we can combine that workshop with other things that we need to speak of. Could, unless there's objection, potentially, we could get a motion to that effect. We'll set up a workshop and have these discussions and see if we can bottom line this.
So, moved.
Second? There's a motion and a second for workshop. Is there any discussion before we make that vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, and under the town council's, item H2. This is from the community development director regarding the status update on the solar project of the former landfill and town buildings.
Hi, Diane.
Hi, good evening. I did send you a memo, which you have in your packet. You had asked for an update on the solar project. As you recall, we received 16 responses to the RFP, which was outstanding. And I think the most that any communities have gotten for their solar projects.
And actually, and to that end, the closest is six.
Okay.
So, so that's a testament to working with the towns. That's wonderful.
Yes, thank you. And Barrington did partner with us, just to remind you on that. So, we have, we have an ad hoc committee who've been reviewing the proposals. Last week, we met, both Bristol and Barrington met with the state office of energy resources to go over the process with them. They are not actually scoring any of the applicants, but they're helping us build the matrix and compare the different proposals. And while our ad hoc committee feels competent to review the criteria, such as, you know, prior experience, operations, maintenance, proposals that are in other municipalities and things like that, each of these proposals has a very complex financing structure, and they all have many different financing options to consider. So, none of the staff that are reviewing these proposals felt confident to review the financing structure. The state agreed that it was probably something that we should bring a consultant on to help us with. They strongly recommended that we engage the services of an, an energy consultant to help us not only look at the financial components, but also to vet the firms and to assist the council with the negotiations going forward.
How much is the energy?
Well, they had just done a similar process with the state. They went out to RFP, and they estimate it would be between $10,000 and $20,000, which we would split with Barrington.
So, the most it would be is in a ballpark figure, $10,000?
That's the ballpark, yes.
And given the scope, and as you said, the finances and the warranties that have to be scrutinized, and, and how large scale of a project is and how we want to do it right, and entering into a long-term lease, whoever is chosen, I believe with the monetary value of the consultant, is the only way to go for the professional opinion like you just suggested. So.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to work with the finance director to find a funding source for this item. And we do have a draft RFP that the state sent us from the project that they just did. So.
If I may, I'm wondering if we could explore another alternative to spending a significant amount of money at, for a consultant. At this point, is it possible to go back to the bidders and ask them to re-present in a way which can be compared apples to apples? So, if there's a financing structure that is somewhat standard for a project like this, whether there's certain credits, abatements, and so on, have, put the owners back on the bidders to spend some additional time to reframe these bids, so that they're at least a little bit closer to evaluate them, so that at least then it would lessen the amount of time required for a consultant to do the evaluation. So, there's got, I would imagine, I guess what I'm trying to get to, is there's some commonality that we can have them reapply their bids to for better, better review?
To make them easier for us.
Yeah. I just think, there's, has to be things that I think the town prefers related to financing. I'm sure there's certain constraints as far as our ability to bond these items or finance them. And instead of having a company present any and all options, have them reframe it around options which are best for the town. And that, that might call the flock a little bit and give you a little bit more security in the best, finding the best partner for this project.
Walter, could you hand the mic down to?
Yes, Kevin McBride is on the ad hoc committee, and he felt very strongly about having to help with the financials at the moment.
Councilman, that, that's a great question. But I will tell you that in order to cull it down, you have to have some sort of experience to evaluate and determine and explain what it is you're looking for from the financial end of things. And the complexities involved with the financial end, I went through numerous submissions. We all took a group of them. Every element that I set up in my matrix to evaluate all of these various corporations, the only one that I could not dig into and figure out how to weigh apples and apples was the financial end of it. It seems to me, with the state going out to bid to request or to find a consultant that has the professional background to do this, that in itself speaks volumes that they're trying to do the same thing at the state level. I think it serves our own best interest that we have somebody that represents us from a financial standpoint in the long term, because you're looking at a 20-year program for these solar projects. Is it a lease? Is it a buyback in the energy? What's, what's the dollar value of the buyback in the energy, so much per kilowatt? And that's what these were, were drilled down into. So, I think that from my recommendation would be to, to highly recommend that we move forward to bring an energy consultant onboard for a couple of reasons. We're really trying to stay in a timeframe here, working with the state in partnership, so that we can also work to get this program underway. Because I will tell you that in the town of Bristol, the former landfill is an incredible site for this type of project. And that's why we had so many bidders, because of the megawatts that they can develop at that unused piece of property. But it's huge. And, and I think we really want to make sure that we do the right thing for the public, because we're going to write a program for 20 years, is what's going to happen.
So, to remind everybody, this was an RFP, a request, to use town land. Primarily, it seems that the bids came back to use the landfill, to put solar panels in. And these bids came back to talk about leasing, as Director McBride has already talked about. With this money, is it, do we use the electricity? Do we apply it towards electric? There's a million different ways to do it. Why are we doing all of this? Because at the end of the day, it will use unused land. It will be quiet. It is not like a windmill that makes a lot of noise, and some windmills, I should say. You can't see it, doesn't move, makes us, that means the people of Bristol money. So, and, and it is environmentally friendly. So, and that is a big and. So, I do like where Councilman Tiska is going to save money. I'm not one to, I mean, $20,000 or $10,000 adds up very quickly. But by the same token, I personally am okay in this instance, because I believe it is ultimately complex. I think your request, Councilman Tiska, is, is realistic. I just, I think the timeline may not work, and I think you expressed that already. So, but is, if, if you wanted to add to that, please do.
No, thank you.
Well, I was just curious of the portion of the RFPs of the existing bids that we have, of, you know, going with your idea format, what would it take away for them to revise where, at the end, we wouldn't end up having a consultant anyways coming in? I, I just don't understand the portion at this level of the RFPs that we can cut where a consultant wouldn't have the same application to look at them. No?
We, we talked about doing a shortlist, but I think as, as Kevin McBride said, it's just, it's just challenging for us without having some other expert help us get there. You know, we just, I mean, and maybe with the consultant's help, we can get it down to a shortlist, and then they can do a more in-depth proposal review on the, on the, on the shortlist rather than on all 16 of them. I think that's something we can look at with them. I, I hear what you're saying, don't waste your time looking at ones that are definitely not making the cut. So, we can, we can look at that to try to keep the cost down.
Diane, and Kevin, thank you guys for staying on top of this. I wanted to know, is there any way we could type up or bullet up the job responsibilities of this consultant? Because I'm just curious, are they going to look at the estimates, and then are they done? Or are they going to carry us through the whole project?
Well, I think the intent is to.
I don't want to spend good tax money and then have.
Right.
Get a really show, you know, a short show for it.
Right. And I think, you know, the other thing to remember is that we're hoping to generate a lot of money for the town and/or save a lot of money for the town. So, I think in the end, this will be money well spent. But the recommendation from the state is that this consultant would come onboard, help us vet the proposals, check references, definitely with the financial piece. We need their assistance. And then, there's going to be a negotiation with the town council and the vendors to get to that bottom-line lease proposal, or, or whatever other term we come up with at the bottom line. So, the idea is for this person to help with the negotiation as well, and to maybe make a couple of public presentations to the council on the project, so that there's better understanding of the different options that you have. So, I think we can definitely get a lot of help from a consultant in this, in this way.
And is Barrington definitely going forward with their, their consultant and?
Yeah, they would, they would be, I think the idea is that we would do a similar RFP, where we would share in the cost and share in the, in the project.
So, would it be safe to say, you have to, we have to talk to Julie, our town treasurer, part of the motion, if we refer to you, of up to $10,000 on behalf of the town of Bristol, or anything below be equally shared at that cost with Barrington?
That's fine. Thank you.
And then, Councilman Swinney, you'd mentioned a, a quick bullet list of their responsibilities.
Yes, I do have a draft scope of work that the state provided. As I said, they had just done this before we met with them. So, they emailed me that scope of work, and I would model ours after that.
So, if you could just email all of us on that, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll send that to you. Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Probably be the criteria of going out for RFP to pick someone for this position anyways.
Is that a motion, Councilman Swinney?
That was a motion.
Was there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Was there any other discussion?
I think Mike.
All in fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
I was going to suggest you do that based upon my experience over the last several months with South Kingsdale. Not only did the consultant vet for the town, but it negotiated a phenomenal deal. The town is making, not only saving money, is making tons of money. And the town could not have done that without the consultant. So, I think it's the right way to go.
You know, Mike, if you could share the name of that consultant, that would be good. Thanks.
Yeah, I think just in context too, I think also what's important is the point at which the consultant is engaged as well to make sure that we get as much value for the time that we spend. You know, if you engage them early in the process when there's a lot of due diligence that we could do in-house is not as sensible as later in the process.
This was also a landfill on top of that in South Kingsdale, it's a super fun site. So, it was well done.
We're looking forward to saving money. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
The next item is item I-1. This is correspondence from Joseph Denise, the President of the Bristol Veterans Council regarding veterans issues, not specific in his letter.
Neither one of these gentlemen is Joseph Denise?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Alman Pereira from the Bristol VFW.
Welcome.
Joe, I'm representing the Bristol VFW and also the Veterans Council. Joe Denise had to go away on business, so he handed me this folder. We have a couple of items that we'd like to get approved, if possible. I'll go over the two items and then if you guys have any questions, I have two smart individuals who have all the answers.
Spectacular.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the Bristol VFW. We'd like to request a piece of the town hall. We have an MIA chair that we'd like to put down, present, and put down here in the town hall in a little area. Sits on a platform. And we have Jerry who has some literature on it. He'll pass out so that you guys can look at it. And Joe has...
Come on up. We'd like to see him.
He's very thorough, so he's got all this stuff here. Go on, just give that to him.
Okay, well. Give it, yeah. I may approach.
Of course.
This is a brochure of the honor chair.
Thank you.
That I've been involved with in the town of Fairhaven, Massachusetts. I brought that in, Andy. Also, this is a picture of the honor chair.
If you would, could you go to the mic because the people at home can't hear?
Okay, first of all, my name is Jerry Payette. I represent the, very proud member of the VFW here in Fairhaven. I moved into Bristol a year ago and I was a member of the Kushner VFW in Massachusetts. And I was one of the ones that brought the honor chair in Bristol, in Fairhaven, Massachusetts by approaching the selectmen there. They agreed to it. And I have a picture of it, which I'll give it to you in a minute, of what it looks like at the town hall. The whole point of the honor chair is to honor those who never came back. We, myself as a Vietnam veteran, I wouldn't even think of bringing this up 30 years ago because the way we came back from service and we had another war with the people, very disgusted with the war and us. But things have changed for the better. And now I'm very happy to and proud to bring this up, to let people know and the importance of remembering those who never came back. On the base of the chair that I was very fortunate enough to speak to Mr. Cotente in mid-December, and he was very much in favor of this whole idea of placing this chair permanently in town hall. And why the town halls? Because if you bring, if you put it in, let's say, a VFW, I mean, it wouldn't make as much if it would be for the public to see this. And right where that spot is in the back, where some people are sitting down, that's where hopefully that chair would go. And it will be a chair that no one sits on. And in front of the chair, there'll have this frame and it says this, "You are not forgotten. Since World War I, more than 91,000 soldiers are uncounted for. This occupied seat is dedicated to the memory of those brave men and women and to the sacrifices each made serving this country. We are all thankful. God bless you. God bless America." And that would be in front of the chair permanently. And in front of it, may I approach to show you a little bit?
This is what it would look like. This is what it looks like in Fairhaven right now.
If it's agreed upon that we have this chair here permanently, well, and finding a place for it, I would like to have a ceremony dedicating this chair. And we're looking at the Friday before Memorial Day whereby we can have a little ceremony in here around 12 noon or so. I mean, this is all tentative with your permission. I'd like to invite the governor, federal senators, congressmen, anybody who would want to show up and dedicate this chair. That is, you know, besides the all the veteran groups around here, which will be coming with their flags and color guards. I have a singer singing a couple of songs and it'll be, it wouldn't be very long, but it'd be very, very moving. And I'm just asking the town of Bristol to accept this possibility so where we can honor those who never came back. When we, as veterans, came back, or our military turning into veterans who came back, we have parades, we have parades to honor us. We have a day to honor us. They never did anything. There was nothing for them. So, this chair would make up for that. And so, when people remember by looking at that chair, they'll always remember the sacrifices left over. I have one, lastly, I have a very good friend of mine who actually was the one that spearheaded it, the one in Fairhaven, Massachusetts, who was, will be speaking at the ceremony. He survived Porkchop Hill. He went up with over two, about 200 of his company and 20 came back. Porkchop Hill is situated in North Korea. They're all buried there. They never came back. That's why we do what we do and that's just one war. That's just one battle. And so, I'm just requesting this to be accepted. And so, that way Bristol being such a patriotic town, I just hope that you would consider it.
Sir?
Thank you very much. You, any questions for this?
You started, you started your comments by saying you were surrounded by some smart, well-speaking people. You need to include yourself into that.
I'm just part of it. It's a group thing.
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
To add to that, there would be no cost to the town. And everything we'd have to follow military guidance and protocol if it's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's two asks today, but I'm wondering if it's possible that we can, without delay, I'd like to make a motion to make any and all accommodations for the MIA chair in town hall here.
Second?
So, there's a motion and a second. I believe, if you're remenable, that we should also refer this to the administrator to act in the interest of the town, to work with them and find an appropriate place since you're in charge of buildings and...
Somebody just caught my attention. They're using a tape measure in the lobby there. We're going to be doing some work in the lobby to clean it up a little bit. So, it may be a more prominent space, but we'll certainly work with the veterans and the council to find the most honorary spot for the chair.
So, we have a motion from Andy, seconded by Mary? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I will speak for the whole council and say, thank you. We had an opportunity, we always have an opportunity, Veterans Day, Memorial Day. And it's been told to us many times and people of Bristol and people of the United States many times, when you see a veteran, you see a soldier, just say thank you. So, we say thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second one is, let's see, there's notes he has here. We would like to place a monument honoring First Sergeant Andrew McKenna. And I gave you, Joe Denise made up a diagram, a way we would like to put it. And it's right across on Hope Street, right across from Agave's, that park. He's got it there as a scale, that picture you guys have?
Unfortunately, we didn't get any support documentation.
You didn't get it?
No.
Oh, you didn't pass them out? Oh, here we go. Okay, I thought you were like that. Joe has the names on there. He's pretty thorough, this guy.
Thank you.
I just fancy one, I'm okay either way.
So, the park is north corner of Thompson and Eve Park at Silver Creek. I don't know who wants, I believe it belongs to the town. I'm not sure.
Yes, it does.
You've got some dimension. There is one monument there on the other side and this one would be placed on the opposite side where Joe put the arrows there, 20 feet in and 40 feet, that way everybody comes by can see it.
My first question was going to be to the Parks and Recreation gentleman here to look at this.
This is a park we had just completed. It was, it's the, but there is land that wraps around the Bosworth Perry House, which is the oldest house in Bristol. And it's right next to the veterans, to the VFW hall that's wooded. And it has land, it has street access that would, this particular piece is already dedicated to, it's the Perry, the Perry Garden. And it was in honor of the Bristol Garden Club. And it's also a family plot on the other side, on the side where the monument would go. I would suggest that we, that I go over there with the Veterans Council and look at a place that I think would be a lot more prominent and would beautify that whole area. And it would be on the piece of wooded area on the north side of Bosworth Perry House. And cleaning that up and actually making it, it is the, it is owned by the town as this garden is. But it would really, it would complete a project that I really wanted this garden to wrap around that building anyway. And it's closer to the VFW hall, which again would be really good. So, if you don't mind, I would like to meet with the council, the Veterans Council, go over there, take a look at it. I think they're going to like it better, but I would still like to explore it with them anyway.
Well, that seems very appropriate.
I, I was just about to say, I don't know the density. I am familiar with the piece Mr. Burke is talking about. It has come up in the past, that wooded area?
Yes.
For suggestion of additional parking, even though it's in an obscure place between the VFW and who would park there and walk. But we have a lot of events in town where we look for additional parking. And I could see, you know, serving this first and foremost, you know, and have a dedicated space and then actually have parking spaces leading up to that so people can visit it and, you know, accomplish a lot if we're going to, you know, spend the time to clear it and do it right, as you said, once you assess it, to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm really happy to hear that you wanted to do a monument and to dedicate it to Sergeant McKenna. And I think that, I think the council, I speak for myself as one council member, would be supportive of it. And so, I think we should maybe just move, you know, like generally approve the concept and turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director and our town administrator to come up with the best location within that area, if that's okay with you gentlemen.
That's perfect. I know the area he's talking about.
I would do that as a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And I think it will actually give more attention to Sergeant Andrew McKenna because it'll be his own righteous place in that parcel that we're talking about. And you can actually, you know, craft it the way you want to do it and have the input that you want, so.
That's perfect.
Will there be also a ceremony as well?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, we have a motion and a second to refer this to Walter, Walter Burke, and to the administrator to act, to find the best place for this and work with VFW. And the motion did not include it coming back in front of us, so it was to find that best place and take the next steps to have that done. That's what I heard. Is that correct?
And just let us know so we know.
Let us know so we can go to the dedication.
We'd like to be part of that dedication.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
It's all right, we can clap again.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item I-2. This is correspondence from the Office of Water Resources Water Quality Certification Program regarding the application of Roger Williams University, One Old Ferry Road, their Phase One of Student Housing Project. There's a deadline to request a hearing, which is Friday.
Diane, did you want to speak to this, to the?
This application, I think this is referred for your comments. The student housing project has been withdrawn from the planning board.
So, is this a receiving file?
I think at this point, you could just do a receiving file.
Can I have a motion? It's a receiving file.
Second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else? Okay. Any against? Thank you. You guys are quiet tonight. You're quiet.
Okay, the next, also, the Community Development Director provides the success of the Rhode Island Energy Challenge.
Welcome again, Diane.
Well, thank you.
Please leave the microphone on.
I know, I just feel like I'm on a roll here. So, this is just to inform you that the town did win the Energy Challenge. Thank you for all your help. No Mary and Eddie did a lion's share.
Special kudos to the two council people sitting over here.
Yep.
Mary and Eddie are phenomenal.
Thank you to stop and shop publicly for letting us be there too, because that was like, really got us over the top.
And thank you to Melinda Howard. And last meeting, I just want to thank again some input from the Bristol Warren Regional Green Team because they had an active role in this as well, so.
Yes. So, we do, we will get a $5,000 grant to do an energy efficiency project in a public building. And we're going to be working with National Grid to figure out what we do for our project.
Perfect.
Diane, I'm serious though. I mean, I don't know, you know, I know it's supposed to be a public building, but how about our public parks to look neat and clean? And I'm serious about the solar.
Oh, the solar compactor?
Yeah. And whether or not that would qualify, I mean, if you could find that out.
I can ask.
Because that, you know, Independence Park on the weekends, it's like a huge mess. And I think this would go a long way to that. And it's just about that cost, if I remember correctly from when we looked it up.
Right, right, right. I'll find out if we can do it, sure.
So, we need a motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Diane can keep going.
Diane?
I've got a few more. So, this is, again, to just inform you that our department won the Rhode Island Chapter of the American Planning Association Award for the current topic, which was Excellent in Water Management. And this was presented to the Department of Community Development for the Gatoris School Stormwater Improvement Program.
Excellent.
But I want to just acknowledge Ed Tanner because he was the project manager for this project and he did a fantastic job. He brought together all the stakeholders, the parents, the teachers, all the town departments. And it was a very successful project. And it's fantastic. When we did the open house, the students, the children actually gave the tour and told us what kind of plants were growing and how the system worked. And it was, it was really, really awesome. So, I just want to thank him for a job well done and just recognize him for this project too.
I think it's very important being recognized by the state here with Diane and her department and all of us, with our hazard mitigation and all these different projects and to be, you know, recognized.
you know, recognized for that project, but the ongoing projects and the state to recognize us. And it's a very complex issue throughout the whole state and municipalities when we deal with hazard mitigation. And we, I know we're in talks with some workshops going forward that's eventually going to be presented to the Town Council to do with hazard mitigation. So it's quite an accomplishment to be proud of, so.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
And there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, also from the Community Development Director, is a request for an executive session, which I assume the council would like to take up at the conclusion of the public agenda.
Yes, please.
Also, from the Community Development Director, the final comprehensive plan update is before your honorable body for adoption. The previous plan is provided as a backup materials.
So Diane, this is in front of us, I spoke with Diane this morning. This is in front of us because we had authorized you to do an administrative approval on the updates to the master, sorry, the comp plan. But you made some changes, and if I understood what you said this morning correctly, that the state asked some questions. You responded to those questions, and it was more than commas and capital letters. So because you've added some responses, it requires us to then kind of bless it again.
Exactly.
Did I get that?
Exactly.
And those questions included, if I recall correctly, how much do we value outdoor space? And then you had a wonderful conversation with Walter Burke and shared those outcomes with the state.
Yes, we did.
And they said, oh, okay, yeah, you value it highly.
Yeah. Apparently, we didn't talk enough about our outdoor open spaces and our recreation open spaces. So I asked them if they knew our Recreation Director, because I think they did.
You were trying to keep less pages, Helen.
I was, I was. So things like that, we provided more clarity and detail on some of the narratives. And as you stated correctly, it's before you for your final blessing on the edits. And I did provide a memo which has all the page numbers of all the changes, if you wanted to note any of them in more detail.
Thank you. It was a very clear and easy summary of it. And it looks like it had some ads for affordable housing.
There was a lot of clarity that they wanted. They were interested to know our successes and things that didn't go so well, why, and how we can improve them. And so that was what we responded to. The state did review these edits, and they found them satisfactory. It's subject to your approval, and then we'll get the approval from the state.
What's this council's pleasure?
My move that we adopt or accept the changes, is that it?
I guess approve it, approve it, yes.
As amended.
As amended, yes, thank you.
Second?
So there's a motion and a second. Discussion real quick is that we, there was a lot of input from the public. A lot of people were in groups that helped formulate these changes, these updates. And as we say in all of these things, thank you, because this would not have been possible without all that valuable input. So if a motion and a second?
I have some discussion as well.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Diane, what can you, what recommendations can you make to ensure that this great comprehensive plan just doesn't go on a shelf and is forgotten about until the next time we revise it? Is there any action that we can take, if not tonight, at our next council meeting, to ensure that this is always in the back of our minds as far as the roadmap that we are to follow, to ensure that this remains to be, continues to be a fantastic community?
Wow, that's a good idea. What I had done in the past, and I sort of got out of the habit of it, but I would certainly put it back on the list to do, is actually when we did the capital plan for the council, we would give a list of things that we've done and things that we need to do. So as you do your capital planning effort, you can see sort of what the things are that are rising to the top. It kind of keeps things current and it kind of builds your work plan as well for the next year.
You mean link it to the plan?
I'm sorry?
You mean linking it to the plan?
I would link it to the plan, right, right. On some of the topics that we, you know, some of the actions that we said we would do sooner rather than later.
So the plan very well details out in a matrix form, one to three-year goals, three to five. Is it possible that the council and the administration could be provided a summary of at least the near term, some of the near term priorities, just to remind us that we have a lot of work to do related to the comprehensive plan? And sort of maybe instead of having the whole big list in front of us, just narrow the list down to some really important priority items so that we can start to all get behind them?
I will certainly do. I'll work with the Administrator to put that list together for you. And I'll have it hopefully for the capital budget meeting, I think in February. I think that's a good idea to kind of tie it to the budgeting aspect.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
That was a lot of discussion, Councilman Tiscus.
There was a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is from Councilman Stewart, requesting council consideration to schedule a workshop with boards and commissions to be held on perhaps April 12th or May 3rd.
I figured by giving some dates, now we can choose a date and actually have this meeting.
Eddie, can I just say, I would love to be there, my office be there to talk about the OMA, the Open Meetings Act, Access Public Records Act. May 3rd, we can do. April 12th, we've got like a two-way conflict that night.
Okay.
So let's just make it May 3rd?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So other than the solicitor's comments of reminding the role of our boards and commission members, which we appreciate so much, the capacity of their role and the state statutes and laws which govern them, just as a friendly reminder, but the larger part of the meeting with our boards and commissions and the timeline that I scheduled this workshop is to give time to all the chairs to meet with their members. So if they have any questions or concerns or anything, you know, going forward, we just talked about the comp plan, we have a charter review, we have audances, any feedback from board members or things that they're concerned about in the town and which they come to the council with. So I think this is a very valued and important workshop that was well overdue. So if everyone could make May 3rd, that would be great.
I'll put it on my calendar.
I'll be there. I'm glad you put this up there.
Perfect.
So a motion to schedule a workshop with our boards and commissions for Wednesday, May 3rd. A second? Would we want it at 6:00 PM? Do you feel earlier would be better?
6:00 PM makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Is that all right, Michael? 6:00 PM?
Perfect.
Okay.
There's a motion? I heard a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Perfect.
The next agenda item was placed on the agenda by Councilman Sweeney regarding the Wally Schools and Schools on the Common in general.
We all know Wally Schools been closed for quite a long time, and the Arts and the Common, they've been working hard in regards to finding grant money and trying to get the doors open again. I thought it was good to get it back on the radar and find out from them where we are. I know they've been awarded a $50,000 grant. What does this do? Where are we with the timeline on the whole project? Hey, guys, thanks.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. My name's Michael Rich. I'm chairman of the Board of Arts and Common. I'm also program director of the Visual Arts Program at Roger Williams University. So I wear a couple of hats.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for your support in the past. You wrote a letter of support for us back in August, I believe, looking at a long-term relationship with the building. And that letter of support went a long way to helping us secure our first significant grant towards this project. We received a $50,000 cultural facilities grant through RISCUP. That is a matching grant, so first order of business for us is to go out and raise that match. $100,000, we will have to kickstart this project of finally getting the doors of Wally open. Now, if you've been to Wally recently, you'll know that $100,000 is not going to get you very far. I think it's deteriorating since even the last time I saw it. But what it will get us is get us a good running start. First things, first thing first is that we would be able to retain an architect to do a full set of construction plans, to get a better handle on the pricing of what would be needed for the renovation of that building. There's some engineering work that would need to be done, for example, an elevator to get access to the basement and the second floor would be part of the things that we'd be looking at. So $100,000 gets us heading down the road, gets us the plans, and then perhaps some funding left over to begin to start some of the work that would need to be done. It also positions us really beautifully with those construction drawings, with the grant in hand, to begin to go out and seek other grant funding, other sources of public and private funding that we may need to secure the project. So we're not here to ask for anything today, other than we've met with Stephen Contente and Diane to talk about actually drafting that lease that we agreed to back in the summer so that we can begin to move forward. Having a long-term lease for Wally is one of the contingencies of being able to receive that grant money and begin to go forward. We need some control over that building in order to have, you know, public funding sources have the trust in us to go forward and fund this project.
Can you give us a rough timeline on it? Just seems...
Well, I mean, the sooner the better. From Roger Williams' perspective, you know, we have agreed to become an anchor tenant in the building, to lease some portion of the building. Right now, we're talking about the second floor, leaving, it's about a third of the rentable space in the building. That would be for Roger Williams programming as well as programming that would be open to the community. Think mentorships, internships, artist residencies, community programming using Roger Williams' equipment, support personnel, et cetera. So, you know, we're on an academic timeline. If it was a perfect world and the funding were in place, we'd love to be there, fall '17. If it had to get pushed back to fall '18, so be it. You know, we want to, it's going to take some time to fully realize this project, to find the money from these sources, so as not to burden the Bristol taxpayer with this project.
Excellent update.
So Diane, are, does, well, I should say maybe to the administrators, do you need, or is there any kind of actionable motion that we need to make at this point in time to start that process for the lease, or is that already in play? Unhappy microphone. There it is.
I think you already set the lease forward with...
Spectacular.
So we'll work out the details and we'll present it to you and take a look at it and either approve it or send it back for changes. But Diane and I can work with Arts and Common, put something together.
Okay. Absolutely.
Steve, I just have one other question in regards to the building. What's the plan for monitoring and to make sure we're preventing maintenance? I don't want us to get into a situation like Byfield kind of situation. Big surprise, you know?
Richard's been, Richard Pimenter, he's been working on our town buildings. In fact, he just gave me his quarterly report. There is an immediate problem we have to deal with, which is the softets may have some type of a problem there that we've got to look at. But depending on how quick the funding comes in, we may be able to encapsulate that with the construction, so.
Okay.
But I'll talk to Richard a little bit further about your concerns.
So you got your eyes on it, which is good. Thank you.
So we just need a receiving file?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, did you want to add anything else?
Doug, did you want to?
No.
No? They were there for support and you did a great job. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item I nine. And this is from the Chairman regarding the Prudence Island Ferry dock repairs.
I asked for this agenda item so the council and, well, and everyone could get up to speed on what was going on with this. And I know that A&R Marine is here to answer any questions that may be out there. So if, I know that in our last, in our most recent discussion, there was dialogue with, or potential dialogue with Portsmouth Town Council that was supposed to happen on their Monday meeting, which has come and gone. Could you share with us?
Yeah, Steven Antaya, President of A&R Marine.
Welcome.
Also live at 55 Charles Street. The last discussion we had, there was, the proposal was to have A&R Marine, Bristol, the Town of Bristol, and Portsmouth each share in the cost of repair of the dock according to the power plan so that, so that we could install our new ramp and gallows. In negotiating or discussions with the Town of Portsmouth, their concerns were that, you know, that our lease first burdened us to do further repairs on other parts of the dock that we leased. So they wanted us to work on mitigating those burdens to the company and any future responsibility of Portsmouth. It also, they were concerned about the length of the term, and they asked for a longer term. So after that, after the last Portsmouth Town meeting that I attended, when, you know, I asked them for their share of the one-third, they came back and asked for those two, those were two of the biggest issues. So we sat down, I sat down with Steven and Andy and Nathan, and we talked about a resolution by the Town of Bristol, or something that I could, by the Town of Bristol that I could bring back to Portsmouth that would give them a more confidence that the ferry operation would stay on that dock for a longer period of time. And the resolution that we're talking about now talks about renegotiating the lease, defining what the premises is a little better. We don't, A&R Marine doesn't really need the north side, and it's included in our lease now. And that requires major repair that we were in, we were supposed to help in funding. So it defines the premises down a little narrower. And basically, our obligation is to the west end where we have our ramp and gallows. So that was part of the resolution that you guys are talking about now. The other part was just talking about future use of it and what the town sees as maybe commercial and other passenger ferry services either on the north side or the west side. So that was something that was in the resolution. Another thing was potential uses even of the west side, of the leased premises as it's redefined. And that's something that we really have to discuss and define further. I mean, that's built specifically for the Herbert Seaborn and the Prudence Ferry. So, and it's designed, you know, that we have our certificate of, to operate from the Public Utilities Commission, so we're very defined to our operation. So that part of the resolution, I'm not really comfortable with. But, you know, in the process of renegotiating the lease, which Mr. Contente and we all talked about, you know, we can define that a little bit further. You know, exactly what potential use of the premise, leased premises means. And I don't really know. And my captains are a little uncomfortable with it. So that has to be defined. But anyway, bottom line is Portsmouth, after their last town meeting on Monday, you know, they were fairly comfortable with the, I brought a draft of the resolution, but they felt that it was important for them to reach out to the Bristol Town Administrator, continue the dialogue, get a better understanding between the two towns of what the long-term use of that dock is going to be. And if they're going to put, you know, a one-third of the repair money for the end, that they have confidence that, you know, that A&R or a ferry service for the residents of Prudence will run out of that, out of that facility. I mean, I told them, I mean, I'm not an arbitrator, I'm not a negotiator, so, you know, their Town Administrator really has to touch base with the Bristol Town Administrator, and you guys have to come regardless of my lease, which we're renegotiating to, you know, make everybody, you know, all three parties, you know, comfortable with it. Regardless of that, what A&R does with the Town of Bristol, that the Town of Bristol and the Town of Portsmouth have their own agreement on the side that, you know, that serves the purposes of each town.
So to add a little bit of clarity... So to add a little bit of clarity to that, and please, and just in a moment, Mary, the, the resolution that Steve has, is not a resolution, it's not signed, as you mentioned, it was a draft resolution.
Right.
The rationale behind that was to, to give Steve something to go to the Portsmouth Town Council to understand, to kind of encapsulate the discussions that were had, but obviously it's up to this council, along with conversations with the administrator, to make that final decision. So no, nothing was done without, without a signature and it wasn't suggested that it would be approved this evening, but it was suggested that those were dialogues that were had and then most of what was there, all of what was there was talked about. So those discussions also include, and you did mention it, the, the thought that Councilman Stewart had brought up, the fast ferry coming in and keeping in mind that there's an opportunity for us to, to take advantage of that. Am I skipping anything there, Councilman Tiscia?
No, I was just going to add, you know, I, I'd like to refer to our town administrator to get his feelings on whether, you know, I think the other option is to go put pen to paper and get a lease done. And not knowing what you think the time needed to do that is, I think the alternative to getting a lease done is to draft a resolution, which I expect would get you or get us to where we need to be with the Town of Portsmouth. So, you know, ideally, we just do a lease. And I'm just wondering, is, should we consider that as an option? Or should we, you know, the resolution is just, like you said, a comfort thing, and I, I don't want to waste too much time on a comfort thing if you can just get right to the point and do the lease. So I just thought, get your input on that.
What I need to do is I need to meet with my counterpart in Portsmouth, and if their commitment depends on our lease and if the lease isn't long enough, there's seven more years left. We're looking for, could be 70,000, could even be 100,000. I don't know where the, where the project's going to come in at. I can tell you par engineering, their opinion estimate back last year, February of 2016 was $262,000 to repair that 45 linear feet on the west end. So I, if, if they're planning on, on splitting it three ways, Bristol and A&R and Portsmouth, they may require a longer lease. However, the lease that we have right now may be sufficient. We are committed to keeping the ferry, but I, I just ask that we don't get distracted with other issues such as the landing fees, which is definitely a great topic for discussion, but I, I think we should stick to the point in where we want to go, and that's to repair the west end of the dock, to make it safe in a very timely matter. So what I would ask is that the council allow me to meet with my counterpart in Portsmouth, find out if the current lease is, is suitable so that we can get the work done. And if not, then I ask that you allow me to negotiate a new lease with A&R Marine for me to present to you.
Okay.
I just, I just need, I just need clarification also. So the memorandum that's item nine, I-9B, that is the, that is the resolution you're talking about?
Draft resolution.
Draft resolution, yes.
So, okay, so that's, that's the draft resolution and it's this and/or renegotiating and you're open to renegotiating the lease?
That's right.
So, okay, so, yeah, so, okay, so I think the renegotiation of the lease would be better to just get that done.
Yeah, and I think to, just to give Mr. Antea an opportunity, the reason that the resolution was drafted was, it was discussed and communicated that a document such as that would aid in your discussions with Portsmouth. And if you don't feel that that's the case, then I think we don't pass the resolution and get right to renegotiating the lease unless you think that, that time lapse is too much.
Well, the, the resolution draft, I presented it to the Town of Portsmouth and they still had concerns. You know, they wanted, that was between A&R and the Town of Bristol. So it, they wanted something that had a little more of Portsmouth's ownership in it or Portsmouth's presence in it. So it, you know, I, I think one option is for me to renegotiate the lease with the Town of Bristol with the premises, you know, and with an understanding of, of longevity and partnership and fixing the west end, you know, and facilitating the north and south side for, you know, passenger ferries or, or the Riptor or whatever future use for the north or south side and not in any way interrupting any of that, of course. And then Mr. Contente could talk to Mr. Rainier over in Portsmouth and they could come to some type of agreement. You know, that, that Portsmouth's going to put in a third of the repair costs and what's Portsmouth's, not, well, almost a guarantee or Portsmouth's understanding that, that their investment is going to be towards a ferry service that's going to stay on that dock. You know, that, that Bristol's not going to decide at some point that, well, you know, the ferry service really isn't a, you know, we have different plans, you know, and we want, you know, so...
So if I can make a motion?
Wait, wait, can I just, well, just to follow up, so right now there's like, in, in the lease, it's vague, right? It's that, that the repairs will be split three ways, this kind of vague language or something?
Sharing the cost.
Sharing the cost. So are you suggesting that, and maybe this is how it would end up working, there'd be two different leases, like, or two different agreements, some sort of an agreement between Portsmouth and Bristol where that, that would outline the, the length of time, our commitment to keeping and maintaining the ferry and the sharing of costs for the repairs? And then that would also, but that would also have to include you as, as the ferry dock owner, I mean, the services owner.
No, I won't be.
Well, no, the services, the owner...
Is that option on the table?
No, 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 no. Services owner, you know, the, the ferry, the ferry owner, not the dock. So is that how it would be? It would be two different documents, like a lease with you and then something with them?
Yeah, we would have an agreement with the Town of Bristol, exactly. We would have an agreement with the Town of Bristol that would outline, you know, the, and also in the memorandum is based on the value of the space, you know, we'll look at, based on the square footage, based on, you know, the, the A&R's revenue and profitability, you know, we'll talk about, you know, what the, the cost, the price of the lease would be.
So this wasn't enough for, to solve the problem with Portsmouth?
It wasn't enough for Portsmouth, no. No, and so they passed the resolution, they...
I'd like to make a motion that we disregard the memorandum of understanding and ask the town administrator to renegotiate the lease with A&R.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
Just discussion, to a certain point, we've been very accommodating as a Town of Bristol. How many years have we been having a ferry service for the Portsmouth residents?
We're committed.
And for them to have reservations and concerns of where their ferry service is going is, I'm just completely dismayed that, you know, along with the, the lease terms with Portsmouth, I believe it's only a good relationship between the two towns and yourself going forward to come to a, a good agreement on all sides to have the service here in our town because it fits the needs for everybody.
I completely agree with Mr. Stewart. You know, I'm, I'm acting in the best interest of Bristol, Portsmouth, A&R, the residents of Prudence, but I mean, I'm not a negotiator between towns, so I leave that up to the town administrator.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second to refer this to the administrator to negotiate a lease encompassing both A&R and obviously conversations with Portsmouth. Is there any other discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one other thing that, I mean, there...
You probably should have let us vote because I think it was going in a good way. No, go ahead, I'm good.
At one point, you know, there will have to be a, a request for, for bid, you know, a request for quote, for the work, you know, is that something we want to get started now?
What I would suggest is that at this point in time, part of the requirement, well, the, the prime requirement is a commitment level, the lease has to be negotiated. So I would say that when the administrator comes back to the council with this proposed lease, that will be the first step, but in, if you want to work in concert to create an RFP that we can approve at the next council meeting, that would also be very appropriate. So, and that doesn't require a motion to do that, but we can certainly amend your motion, Andy, if you'd like to, or you're comfortable as it is?
I think the intent is that we move forward on understanding what the cost of the repairs are, and like you said, I don't know if you need a motion to do it, but I think, Steve, you're working on an RFP to, for repairs of the west end, so to define the scope, which then we can consider.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Director McBride?
The only concern I would have going with an RFP, you need a funding source.
We have to pay for it?
I mean, I would have put it out a long time ago.
I, I know you're, you're absolutely correct on the scope and which part of the project and the value that's attached to that, so.
The treasurer, Julie Gosher, has been in direct conversation with all of this. In fact, we had a recent meeting, the administrator, myself and bond counsel, and that was also part of that dialogue too. So that's a great point. We will, obviously, we, we don't, we know we need to pay for it, of course, but a funding source has also been considered, so, and it continues to be, so.
Just part of the documentation that we have to submit when we want to put an RFP out has to indicate where that funding source is. So I just want to be able to cover that when we do go forward.
Okay.
Because we are close with the documents.
Perfect. So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think you want to go away. You may want to stay with us for this next one, so.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is item I-10. This is from Councilman Tiscia regarding request for support of proposed legislation allowing for implementation of a landing fee.
Councilman?
Yes, so what you've received in your package is draft legislation, which is modeled after legislation which currently exists for three other communities, those communities being Newport, New Shoreham and Narragansett, to charge a landing fee for adult passengers. And this landing fee would apply to passengers which board and disembark from the Prudence Island Ferry Dock, also starting to be referred to as the Port of Bristol, would not apply to passengers on recreational vessels throughout Bristol Harbor and other areas of the coastline. The intent is to generate revenue which can be used to fund and address existing and anticipated impacts, including but not limited to parking congestion, town services, future tourism-related services and promotion, and capital improvements and maintenance to the dock. So this evening I ask the council's consideration for this landing fee, which is, I propose to be at 35 cents a passenger. And with that support, we would bring this legislation up to the State House to be considered, to be enacted, which then would come back to us and allow us to apply this landing fee. This landing fee wouldn't adjust, wouldn't require A&R Marine to go back to the PUC. It'd be collected by A&R Marine. They could be compensated for the collection if there are additional costs to collect this fee. And I do believe that we have no better partner than A, than A&R Marine in the Prudence Ferry. I think that there's significant opportunity to continue to work with A&R to build their ridership, not just for residents of Portsmouth and Prudence Island, but to visitors to the Town of Bristol. I think, you know, we are challenged with building our visitorship to support our downtown businesses and restaurants, and I think Prudence Island currently isn't utilized by the Town of Portsmouth for tourism, and I think Bristol needs to look at doing that. And I think as we do that, there'll continue to be impacts to the town, and I think this landing fee will allow us to consider to offset the costs to leasing additional parking spots downtown, maybe constructing additional parking structures so that we can take a real bite out of the apple with the parking issues we have. We're continuing to look at additional developments at the Gladding property, marina development, all which have demands on parking. And I think by, in the Prudence Island passengers today, comment that this one thing they'd like improved on the service is parking. And I think we're challenged to do that and justify doing that financially when the terms of the existing lease, and I anticipate the future lease, are not going to come near what we need to do to invest in addressing the impacts on, on parking and other town-related services. So I think this is one mechanism to do it, based on last year's ridership, adult ridership. This would generate another nearly $20,000 that we could use to improve the quality of life downtown Bristol. So with that, I, again, would love to entertain the council's support to push this up to the State House for consideration.
Well, Councilman, I'm glad you picked the lowest one. Narragansett is 35 cents is what Councilman Tiscia is proposing. Newport is $3 and New Shoreham is 50 cents. I agree with why you're trying to promote this, like our other, like communities with their marinas and their ports. I think it's a modest adjustment that when we negotiate through our year with lease parking lots and whatnot, it's, every little bit helps.
Mr. Solicitor, walk us through the process. If we, this council decided to, to support this legislation, we would refer to you, you would create some draft legislation, which we would then work with our local legislators to, to start that ball rolling? What kind of public hearing, how would the public be able to share their thoughts, both positive and negative on it?
So the he, the, the legislation basically is in front of you this evening. What I would do is put it into the proper format to be submitted to our legislators. Public hearings would be at the State House. We would find out from our representatives to the General Assembly when the hearings would take place on both the House and Senate side, and that would be the public hearing.
Okay.
But it would require a resolution from this council supporting this in order to get the process rolling because we cannot send it to our delegation without a resolution from the council.
I've reached out to state the representatives and representative and the, he was amenable to, if this council is amenable in, in supporting this, then he would take the next step with it, so. Mary, I just, like you wanted to say something?
Well, at some point, I mean, if, if it passed there, we would have to have, what, an ordinance locally? I mean...
Right, oh yeah, this is just enabling legislation.
Correct, so there would be a public hearing at some point.
Yeah, at, at that point in the future, absolutely.
Thanks for that point.
I just, I just had a question. So does the landing fee affect just the person or the vehicle? How, how does it work? I, I walk up, I buy a ticket from A&R and there is a line item for 35 cents as a landing fee to go to Prudence and come back, or just explain to me how it works?
Yeah, it's per person.
Per person.
Adult passenger, over 12 years of age, correct.
Right, okay. Yeah. And they would collect it and then they would, they would send that funding to the Town of...
Yeah, I think, consistent in timing with their rent payments quarterly, I think would be a good mechanism to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be remiss in my responsibilities to the, to my company and the residents of Prudence Island if I didn't advocate on their behalf, and while the town is certainly within their right and its practice in other towns, as Mr. Tiscia described, it's still a burden on the, on the passenger. We've recently raised rates through, because of improved service, where service was deficient in the past, better infrastructure, where, we're hoping to go through this process of funding the repairs on the dock without another rate increase. So, you know, I just, I have concerns over the cost of the ticket now, and, you know, again, while it's well within your right to do it, I, you know, I, I just want to argue on behalf of the passenger that it be as low as possible if you, if you charge it at all, so.
How much are the tickets now? What do you charge now?
I think it's 5.80 round trip. I don't know right off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't.
So it'd be another 35 cents on top.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would, would that be a discussion, Councilman, to not maybe mirror another community, but actually be the cheapest in the state of maybe a quarter instead of 35?
I think that's, you're looking at an arbitrary amount. I think, you know, like, you have the ability to go to the PUC and have your rate adjusted based on the service you provide, which to your credit is unmatched, as I understand it, from previous operations. You have reliable service, well-maintained boats, capable captains and, in general, safe, reliable service, and that costs. And I think you've seen those costs and you've adjusted your rates. Bristol provides a service too, and we have no way to adjust that rate. And as you like to provide top-notch service, we as a town want to provide great service as well to both passengers and residents. We want to provide safe, convenient parking, we want to provide services to empty trash receptacles, and I think that this is a mechanism for us to do that. You know, we talk about the lease and renegotiating the lease, but I think... I think there is not an achievable path to be able to get us where we need to be to even offset the amount of costs that we have in the partnership that we have with the ferry. So I think the landing fee is our way to adjust rates and to continue to invest in making your business great by providing excellent support services.
And it doesn't seem, not that anybody wants to pay anything more, but as a comparison to the current rate, it doesn't seem burdensome. And again, nobody wants to pay more. I'm not suggesting that.
Might I suggest that, and for, to make my job easier, that we could define what some of those parking improvements might be, because it is a complaint, you know, of the passengers and residents. So that would certainly be helpful, you know, for us if we can direct passengers to parking that is provided by the town or facilitated by the town through this, through this landing fee, you know? I mean, it would, it would be a big improvement for the town and for us, that we wouldn't get complaints that there's no place to park.
Just to be clear, you know, I don't think I'm in the position, or the council's in the position, to represent the fact that if we charge a landing fee, we're going to have more parking. But I think, in general, I think there is conversation about relieving the problem. And I think that along the process, we should be diligent in trying to address that, not just for the ferry's needs, but for all businesses' needs downtown. So I think it's part of that conversation. So, so yes, you know?
Okay.
I think it's part of the ruling conversation.
Well, I think that, see, I'm a little torn on this issue, because I understand, you know, it's nice, it's a good way to make money to deal with parking, to deal with other problems. But on the other hand, one of the reasons we have wanted to keep Prudence here, I mean, you know, the ferry here, is because of a belief that it enhances our downtown community and our businesses. So I do think you make a very good point. One, on the marketability of why you're doing this, in that it's not directed to a general budget item, but that it would be. So we have, we have reduced the number of parking spaces and leases that we have in the, in your area. So we have taken two parking areas away. We have just one when we had, one bigger one. So we cut back on that one and then the one directly across. So if you could say that we're going to look at reconsider with the money to re-lease, to re-lease those spaces, that may be something where people say, well, that's not really a big deal. And I think that, or it's going to go to repair dock. I think it would be nice to have that, that linkage. You know, I just, when I first read this, I was struck, not somewhat, I was struck by the people that might use it on a regular, daily basis, you know, as opposed to the tourists, the weekend people. But I just, what really struck me was the, the amount of times that I've heard my colleague here talk about the Providence-Newport ferry stopping here, and how much we've sort of begged for that, and now we're going to charge a landing fee on top of it, you know? And I assume that that would be to them as well. Am I correct?
Yes. And also, small cruise ships, and I will speak on that behalf, that I'm very proud of our town. And as the Councilman said, that it costs a lot of the taxpayers' investment of the town that we live in, and the town that we promote for our tourism. And for a modest fee with our other neighboring towns that are in that same scope of tourism, I believe it's not going to curtail the ferry to come here or any other aspect. I know it gets talked about of when fees are raised, you know, we're going to lose this, we're going to lose that. I think this is a modest fee that's on the same grounds of our other, you know, boating communities. And I think it can actually raise some revenue on behalf of the taxpayers, so we can make reinvestments in our capital projects going forward along the waterfront.
Well, I do think that that, that doesn't hurt to enumerate what those are. So, so that people have an understanding of why we're implementing this, particularly the Prudence Island people. And so I think if you could make some linkages to that, it's going to be an easier sell, if you will, when we go to do our ordinance. I'm not sure that there's going to be a ton of people at the State House. I think there'll be people here at our council meeting when we go to do the, the final ordinance for this.
We could take the ferry up the river, you know?
Could have it over as we go there.
So Andy, why don't we, if, if you could make a motion in regards to this, and we can add discussion if appropriate?
I'd like to make a motion that the town solicitor work on draft legislation, put in appropriate format to submit to our state representative for consideration as enabling legislation.
Can I just ask you to make that stronger? Since I've actually reviewed this, this is the language I would submit, and it's important in your resolution that you adopt what's in front of you tonight. I will put it in the proper format. I'll do the punctuation and all that type of stuff. But, like, for instance, if you're going to keep it at 35 cents versus 25 versus what, you need to make that decision tonight.
Well...
As I understand your motion, it, it would be that the council is supporting the legislation as proposed, request that the solicitor draft the necessary bill to have it sent to our delegation for introduction and passage in the General Assembly.
And there's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for this question.
I'll second.
Please.
Since we're in negotiation, Steve, I wanted to get your input on it, because going back to the original circle of it, I don't, where's, is this, are you comfortable moving forward since we have just assigned the negotiation over to you as well? I want to make sure you're part of this.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, quite frankly, I don't think this is the time to bring it up, a landing fee.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why. They, A&amp;R Marine, or whoever the ferry service provider may be in the future, they're paying us rent. The rent is reflected in the rates. It's all regulated by the PUC. The town of Bristol, I think it's $850 every space that we rent on the Prudence Island dock. So there are revenue streams. I think it's going to hurt the daily commuters going to work and going to school 365 days a year. They're not Bristol residents, but I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent of a landing fee is for tourism and recreation, non-necessities. Down the road, do I think it's appropriate? Absolutely. If we could attract cruise ships and, you know, Bay Island transports, absolutely. They would have, you know, some type of an impact on our services and town, and I think that would be great. And I think it's a great concept, a great idea. I think right now it's going to complicate our improvements there. It's going to complicate our relationship with the Prudence Council, it's going to, that Prudence Islanders, and all the residents across the bridge. I think it's going to make things very difficult right now. Great concept. I think the timing, the timing and the tent might be a little bit off right now.
That's a good point.
Any other discussion?
Maybe we should continue.
Well, I think, I appreciate those comments. You know, I think by getting council support this evening, doesn't mean it's going to happen. You know, as the solicitor said, we're going to have an opportunity to draft an ordinance, taking into account public comment. So it may not happen with the council's support this evening. I think it's also important to recognize that the timing is right to, for the town to take steps to level the playing field. I know we do get revenue from parking spots, but still, the debt service associated with acquisition of this property, the lost tax revenue, there's no taxes being paid. This costs the town about $40,000 a year after that revenue. So, and that's to provide infrastructure for the town of Portsmouth. That's what we're doing. So I know we're talking about sharing in the costs of some of these capital improvements, but I think we need to, and I, and I don't think we're going to be able to recapture that with lease negotiations. So I think the residents of Bristol really need to have a bigger stake in the operations and the impacts that are caused from those operations downtown. And I think we're going to be struggling this budget season to address those, those impacts without this fee. So that's why I think that it should be considered by the town council.
See, I agree, too, is that I believe that there's, that, that there has to be public dialogue. There will be public dialogue. This council, and more specifically this town, doesn't make those decisions like this without listening and while having the opportunity, the public have the opportunity to share their thoughts on it. So to your concern, and has already been pointed out by Councilman Tiska, is that we need to talk about this more. And it would, if we just said, this is it, and we're doing it, taking the next step, then I'm, I'm absolutely in your camp. But because we can have dialogue about this, and because there will be dialogue about this, I think it's appropriate that we at least give ourselves the opportunity to be able to do it. And if, after all that conversation, we choose not to, this does not require us to charge a fee. This gives us the opportunity to do so if we see fit. So that's my two cents. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I just want to say, and I would like it just noted, that that is just to give the opportunity, because I'm not sold that this is necessarily in the best interest at this time. I'm inclined to agree with the administrator, but we have a very short window for the legislative season. And so that is the only reason I'm supporting it right this minute.
I don't think anybody will make a decision without that public input. So, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Still writing? Okay.
There was a lot said there.
The, the next, the next item is the annual budget workshop schedule for council adoption.
Make a motion to adopt the scheduled dates and agenda submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion. I was just curious if my, if we could start earlier at 6:30 at all. But I know it starts seven. Does it present a problem to start earlier, Lou?
It's up to you.
Yeah.
It's not a problem for me. It's who is going to show up.
Just throwing it out there, Mr. Chairman.
Let's flip it around. Does anybody have an issue with starting at, as opposed to the seven o'clock starting times posted, to do it at 6:30 starting time? Does anyone? So do I hear a motion?
Does it mean it's an extra half hour?
That means it's a half an hour earlier.
If the intention, well, that's my point. It's easy to start at 6:30 and think you're going to be leaving earlier, but that could work opposite also. So...
Well, I think if we can make sure that we have, like, the departments that can just go whenever we have time, I think that's an important piece.
Agreed.
You know?
Yeah, with the, the understanding that all the, the departments that are listed as those, those, if time permitted, are those of us who are here anyway.
Right.
I'm for an earlier start time for an earlier end time.
6:30.
Does anybody disagree with that? So I heard that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second to push those start times to 6:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I won't be in for a week and a half.
But just, just for, just to be, just to be clear, we're just talking about the workshop days. We're not talking about the public hearing days, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great point. Thank you.
I should, yeah. Good clarification there. I think you should say it's seven.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, we have several bids. Item J1 is for bid 852, and this is for the cooling and heating equipment replacement in the town hall vault. There are five bids that we received. The first is from Allstate Construction Incorporated of Farmington, Connecticut, with the base bid of $86,443, and the alternate number one of $97,910. The second from Arden Engineering Constructors LLC of Pawtucket, with the base bid of $20,810, and the alternate number one of $45,100. The third is from Temptech Meck of Providence, with the base bid of $11,868, and the alternate number one of $37,250. The fourth from Automatic Temperature Controls Incorporated of Cranston, base bid of $13,911.75, and the alternate number one at $38,585.15. And the fifth from GM Refrigeration Company of Fall River, $14,995 is their base bid, and their alternate number one is $47,500.
Do we just need a motion?
Motion to, to refer this to the town administrator, to make the best interest, make the best decision for the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just have a quick question, and I'm, I agree with that completely. Remind me what the base and the alternate is, just really quick. Why was that, what was the spread?
The climate control system could have been broken up, an all-inclusive unit versus two separate units. I think that's what it was.
Gotcha.
But Richard, Richard has all, Mr. Pometta has all the particulars on that.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
No, because I'm jumping to J2, and I'm just wondering if it's within the administrator's best interest of having the same company when we're going through these bids. I just want to put that out there. That's all.
Can you speak to that? Can we, can we encompass?
Well, maybe I'll speak at J2.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second to refer to the administrative act in the best interest of the town. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. And J2 is for the annual repair and maintenance contract for the townwide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. We have bids from Arden Engineering Constructors of Pawtucket in the amount of $26,827. We have Temptech Meck of Providence at $30,000. We have Automatic Temperature Controls Incorporated of Cranston at $15,253. And finally, GM Refrigeration Company Incorporated of Fall River at $18,775.
So to my point, Mr. Administrator, four of them are on J1, and the price structure's a little different in comparison to each one, where some came in cheaper on the others. So maybe in negotiations to deal with one company, I'm just saying, take that into consideration.
We will.
I heard that, as you referred it to him, to act in the best interest of the town.
And I would like to refer J2 to the administrator, to work in the best interest of the town.
Tim, did I hear you seconded that?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, interestingly. Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have another request for executive session, which, again, will be taken up at the conclusion of the public agenda. Then we have the individual member, House member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So if you want to be barred up a board or commission, this is what you have to do. Just fill this out. Come see the clerk, grab this, and express your interest in a board or commission. If you're not sure what you want to get involved in, reach out to us, and we'll walk you through that. I spoke to Diane Williamson this morning, and she said, when we get to the end of this meeting, at this part of it, sometimes it feels like being on an airplane, a three-hour ride, and then you can't get off the plane at the end. And so, so to, to speak to that, I'm all done. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
Am I still on the plane? All right. I just wanted to say, ask my...
That was my line.
Excellent. I just wanted to ask my colleagues to think about the budget in regards to implementing in the capital budget, some sort of savings where we are, for example, have, we need a fire truck. And throughout the different budget years, we are actually putting a little bit aside and funding that, so that way we have a down payment to do that. I think a lot of times we look at the capital budgets, and we have different projects that we want to work on, but they're not necessarily funded. And, you know, talking to different department heads, learned that we maybe would take the, the kill out of having to get all that, get all that money at once, for example, for that, for a certain project. So...
We do that?
We do do that.
We just don't do that to, well, we could do it at a greater level. So...
It would be great. That way it's not such a big hit, you know what I mean?
Agreed.
When we need that, that track, tractor truck, or whatever we need. So, just, my second issue is the recycling committee is going to start back up. We are hitting the 27%, 28% range, but we need to be at the state mandate of 35%. So the committee will be starting back up on a monthly basis. I am reaching out to the public if they are interested in getting involved. We're going to be doing a lot more education outreach for the next year to try to get that rate up, help save money, obviously, be greener, but also the more you recycle saves us tax dollars. So feel free to reach out to any of my colleagues. They will point you to the chairman, Keith Maloney, or myself, and we'll get you involved. We're also going to be providing a conference line, so you can just dial in and listen and contribute as well, because we know everybody's busy. But we're looking for your involvement and help to get us to that 35% mandate. So with that, have a good night. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tiska.
So two items. The first is just to let, or tell everyone about a fantastic collaboration with the help of the Governor's Workforce Board. The Rhode Island Marine Trade Association, which is a state association located here in Bristol, actually, has received funding to partner with the Harrisaw Marine Museum. in Bristol, actually, has received funding to partner with the Harrisawf Marine Museum to conduct a boat building and repair course, and offer it to Mount Hope High School students. So there are 10 spots available to Mount Hope High School students to go to the Harrisawf Marine Museum and learn about boat building and repair. It's a 10-hour-a-week program for 10 weeks, and the last 10 is, I think, the best part, is the students get paid $10 an hour. So it's a great collaboration here, happening in Bristol, working with our, our youth. And finally, just want to remind everyone that February 3rd to 5th is the Providence Boat Show. It's a fantastic time to get ready for spring and go and look at boats and different vendors, and from kayaks to powerboats to sailboats, and please come, it's a great weekend.
Ms. Perella.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend my congratulations and congratulations of our council, I will just take it for granted, we all don't want to, to Dr. Richard Mallow, the founder and owner of the Warren Animal Hospital, who's celebrating his 50, 50th anniversary of founding the, the hospital. I was very fortunate that I heard at the last minute about a, somewhat of the last minute, about a party that they were having, and I was able to get a ticket, and there were about 350 people at the Venus a couple of weeks ago. And I don't know, I know many, many people, I know he has always taken care of our animals from the time I was much younger to, to this very day. So congratulations to Dr. Mallow for a job well done, and many more years of service to our fur babies. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Stewart.
We're flying. Wonderful.
I get to spend some time, which I enjoy, with, with our seniors, and we're very fortunate to have elderly housing here in Bristol that suits their needs, such as Benjamin Church. We have our senior center, we have elder care, and two ladies that are, you know, just great at the senior center, they were in attendance tonight, Maria Orsini, the director, and Donna Caroa-Wilson, and along with tandem their partnership with Candy Panzer, the director of Benjamin Church. And when talking with them, they had such a great idea, because so many times there are seniors that don't have extended family, they're all by themselves, living in those quarters. And it's nice that we have these groups, but they started a fostering program and a pen pal program for, for our seniors. So if you're out there in the public, and you want to do something good for the community and reach out, you can call the senior center at 253-8458, and ask about these programs, and get engaged with our seniors that might be by themselves, and, and just do something good for the community. I, I just think it's a great idea and concept, so I just want to convey that to the public. And with that, I guess we have to get the plane off the tarmac, and so thanks, everybody, for attending tonight, everyone viewing at home. Thank you, Michael Davis, and Sergeant Arms Archie Davis. Thank you.
Or Archie Martin, too.
Archie Martin. See, I'm rushing, you're making me rush.
Town Administrator Agenda Items?
Thank you. It was a pleasure attending the, the awards of the Rhode Island State Council of the Arts. They actually awarded four different grants to Bristol organizations. Cogshell Farm was one, Linden Place, the Art Museum, and Arts in Common. So it was, it was kind of nice to see that Bristol was recognized, and we got some funding coming in for our very special places. I spoke to Tom Rossi recently, he's the president over at Hall Spars, and there was some optimistic news there, although they did have a significant layoff. They're hopeful that they'll be up and running, they're staying hopeful. But the good news there was that the majority of the employees found work in the area, in the industry. And Tom stressed to me that it is, we still have some very strong employers in Bristol, and that industry is capstone, and it's, it's, it's going pretty strong. So that was some good news. The snowstorm back on January 7th went well. Director McBride's still here, thank you, director, and your men. From what I understand, there was, there was no accidents, no injuries, and it was a significant snowfall. I know they did regular trash pickup and recycling in the morning, they pre-treated the streets, and they worked right through till like 6:00 AM, I believe. I think all your trucks were out, and several vendors, right? Well done. The last thing is some sad news. Dr. Maderis, Victor Maderis, he used to be our school doctor at Bristol High School, and for the school apartment years ago, and a physician in town, and he had quite the reputation of being dedicated to the community and to his family, and it's very sad news to say that he did pass away. And I spoke to somebody today about him, and they said, "You know, Dr. Maderis went to every high school football game as the town's school doctor." And it was very reassuring to people there that the doctor was going to treat their children. So I, I love that story, and I think that just really shows what public service really is, and I, on behalf of the town administrator's office, I'd like to express my deepest condolences to the, to the Maderis family. Other than that, good night, and thank you.
We do have a, a matter held over from the consent agenda. This is item H3, at the request of the council. That matter has to do with a resolution in opposition of citing Clear River Energy Center Power Plant in Burville.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to refer this to the solicitor, to draft a resolution on the town council's part, in the opposition of the citing of the Clear River Energy Center Power Plant.
So, is there a second, so we can have discussion? Don't worry. Okay, there's a second discussion. Just for clarity's sake, that this was on the council docket, I don't remember when. It was a few months back, if I recall correctly. And we opted at that point to take no action, we did a receive and file, which is our typical state with anything that is requested, if we don't have backup documentation, conversations, such and so forth. But, Mr. Solicitor, you wanted to add something?
No.
All you want to do is add Bristol as supporting the resolution, correct?
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that we should take a position, because it's a very controversial issue, and I, for one, don't have, because it, I don't have all the facts to make a decision, if this is good or bad for the, I mean, for the community in general. I mean, so, I know that, you know, the, there are many opposed to it because of, and, you know, environmental concerns, but there's also the need for the energy. I mean, I don't, I don't think that we have, I don't feel that I have enough information to make a determination one way or the other, and so I, I don't really think we should take a vote on it, but.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Lemore. My address is 608 Camp Dixie Road in Pasco, Rhode Island, which is part of Burville. I'm also a member of the Burville Land Trust, so I thank you for the opportunity to, to address the council tonight. If I could, could I just?
Sure.
If, if I may, I'd like to take a few minutes just to try to, to explain why we're here, and give a little bit of explanation about the project. So back in 2005, uh, 2005, 2015, a company called Invenergy came and proposed a project within the northwest corner of Rhode Island. So they proposed to build a 1,000-megawatt frac gas, oil-fired power plant. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with Burville, or how many people have come up there to visit, but one thing, if you have come to visit, you'll, you'll understand that much of Burville is very rural. The location where they proposed the plant is an F5-zoned area for farming, and it's surrounded by our state parks. So if you're familiar with George Washington Park, or Pulaski Park, or Buck Hill Management Campground, or Douglas State Forest, or the Feinstein Youth Camp, imagine the center of that, or kind of, that is around where they want to put this proposal. Additionally, the, the Burville Land Trust owns 214 acres of conservation land in the, in Burville, much of what, which is in that same vicinity. The way that that land is funded and maintained is through our, our tax dollars, all of our tax dollars. So as you may remember, on this, this last election, question six was for open bonds, for open space bonds, which typically gets approved at a rate around 65% or so. I know when I vote yes on that question, I don't imagine wherever the conservation land is going to be funded, they're going to put this type of facility where I think my tax dollars is going to fund. So you may ask, why, if this is such a conservation area, would a power plant or a power company want to build a facility there? Well, it turns out it's a desirable place for, for a power plant. So there's a compression station nearby, there's gas lines, and there's power lines. In fact, it's so desirable that the existing power plant in, in Burville actually had this location on the original proposal back in 1988. That proposal went through an environmental impact assessment. They had 30 locations on their proposal, and Rhode Island DEM came back and said, "You cannot put the, the facility in this location because of the state parks that are there." So they removed that from the proposal, and it ended up five miles away, where it sits today. So the question is, what is our town, what's our town's position, and what are we doing about it? So what our town is able to do, we actually don't have a voice in the process. The way it works, the EFSB, the environmental, the energy facility citing board is the group that will make the decision. So the, it's made of three people, the head of Rhode Island DEM, the head of the PUC, and the head of statewide planning. So Burville's role in this is to provide an advisory opinion for our planning board and our zoning board, which we've done. To prepare for that, we've, we've hired consultants and spent over $200,000 to bring consultants in to make sure we're able to supply a factual advisory opinion of whether or not this was in alignment with our comprehensive plan in the Rhode Island Land Use Plan of 2025. So the determination was absolutely not. In fact, this couldn't be anywhere close to what our comprehensive plan kind of guides us to do. We're, we're guided to actually protect that area of our town. So you ask, why, why are we here today? Why are we looking for Bristol's support? And why are we asking for support of other towns? So our residents in our town council have actually joined together and started visiting town by town, looking for help. In fact, our, our council president asked me to apologize that he's not here in person today. It happens to be the night of our own town council meeting, otherwise he would have been here with me to talk to you tonight. Because we don't have a voice, our only option is to gain support by other towns and environmental groups. So we're hoping that maybe Bristol would consider joining the other 22 towns that have already passed the resolution, and every single environmental agency in Rhode Island, including the Audubon Society, the Nature Conservancy, and Save the Bay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? There's a motion and a second to draft an ordinance in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gold cheese?
Thank you very much, and if I can make one other comment, it's, it's not even related to what I came here for today. Earlier in your meeting, somebody was talking about, one of the agenda items was about a substance abuse program that you're either establishing and working on in the town. I hope I didn't overstep my bounds, but I actually sent something to our council president. One of the things I've learned by going from town to town is that some of the problems are not unique to your town, and this is something we've struggled with as well, and our, our council president has been very active and has established a program over the last few years. So I asked that maybe he could share some of his learnings with you all.
Thank you. Very much appreciate that, thank you.
Me, and I had one thing. I just brought a little extra documentation here, an actual topo map, and I also include the testimony from the Ocean State Power vetting process back there in the 80s, testimony from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and from DEM itself concerning this site, which was considered as an alternative site for the Ocean State Power Plant, and was, was rejected. You see, at that time, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission had the authority to vet power projects like this, because you have the interstate gas lines and power lines, and the power is, is going to be used regionally. Somehow, they are no longer involved, and we have this EFSB process, so I'd like to-
If you can hand that to the clerk, we'd appreciate that, thank you.
Perhaps your Conservation Commission would like to look at this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rhoda Northrup, and I live at 85 Summit Drive in Cranston, and I've been very much opposed to this power plant as well, and I'm 100% behind the people in Burville. But earlier, Ms. Perella, I think you mentioned something about we need the electricity. You weren't quite clear on that, and I just want to tell you, according to National Grid, Rhode Island fortunately has an excess of electricity right now. And over the past 20 years, we've been using every year, on the average, 2% less. That's pretty fantastic, because everybody's changing out light bulbs, and just take a look at the yellow tags on those appliances that you've been buying for, how long have they been, you know, since the 80s, we've been seeing those yellow tags on our appliances. So I hope that helps you a little bit to feel more comfortable. And my personal opinion, this company that's based in Chicago named Invenergy, they're using and abusing Rhode Island. They're going to destroy the last swath of forest in our state, which is a migratory pathway to Canada, and it also abuts a national heritage corridor. Once that plant is there, and even when it's decommissioned in 40 years, nothing will ever grow there again. That breaks my heart to think about that. And I think you people are very conscientious about conservation and presentation, preservation, because I've been listening to the conversations this evening. So if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to contact us, but I hope that explanation helps you. And the other thing is, you may not know this, this power plant during the winter, when it runs on diesel fuel, would require a million gallons of water a day, and we're in a drought. And the governor has asked us to conserve, so does that mean we go without a shower? And we go without drinking water, and the power plant would get the water? That's what would happen. So thank you so much for your support. My city of Cranston did sign the resolution as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
We are going to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246-585, with regard to town home land lease or sale of town homes.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
I almost did it myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.